Good evening. Let's call the business meeting of Florence City Council to order. Please stand.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here. Empower us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote? A roll call, please, not a vote. Sorry, roll call. Mrs. Wingo?
Present.
Mrs. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mrs. Whalen?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Present.
Mrs. Cable?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. We have for your consideration approval of the minutes of the business meeting, September 23rd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Uh huh.
Ms. Whalen?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief Mallory.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Tonight, we are here to swear in two officers who successfully completed our promotional process. The promotional process that our officers go through is extremely competitive, and I want to take a time to thank all the officers who participated in it. We are conducting the promotional process because we have a captain who's retiring at the end of this month, Captain Greg Ray Camp. He's honorably served the Florence Police Department and the community for nearly three decades. Beginning his distinguished career in 1996, Captain Ray Camp will be retiring at the end of the year, or end of this month. So if you would, please join me in thanking Captain Greg Ray Camp for his experience and dedication. It's going to be hard to replace for our department. So good luck with everything you do, Greg. Now, I'd like Captain Mike Geis and Lieutenant Eric Daniels to come forward, please. To fill the captain's spot, Lieutenant Mike Geis is being promoted to rank of captain. Captain Geis has been a member of the department for over 17 years. He started his career with Lexington Police Department before coming to Florence. Throughout his career, Captain Geis has held the rank of officer, corporal, sergeant, and lieutenant. He served as a field officer, training officer, a member of the SWAT team, and was assigned to the criminal investigative unit for several years before returning to the patrol unit. Captain Geis is a graduate of the Northwestern University Command School. Please join me in congratulating Mike Geis on his new position. Next, to fill the vacant lieutenant spot, Sergeant Eric Daniels is being promoted to that rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Daniels has been with the department for over 18 years. Before starting his law enforcement career, Lieutenant Daniels served our country as a sniper in the United States Marine Corps. Throughout his career at Florence, Lieutenant Daniels has held the rank of officer, corporal, and sergeant. Lieutenant Daniels served as a field training officer, and as a sergeant, he led the criminal investigative unit for six years before returning to the patrol unit. Lieutenant Daniels is an active member and current team leader of our SWAT team. Lieutenant Daniels is a graduate of the administrative officers course through the Southern Police Institute, a very prestigious leadership program for law enforcement professionals. Please join me in congratulating Eric Daniels for his new position. You can do them both at the same time, that's fine.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police captain and police lieutenant for the city of Florence, Kentucky according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, that you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight with a duel with deadly weapons, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending so help you God?
I swear.
Congratulations. I know we have a big crowd, so if you'd like to enter, your oaths are behind you to sign. And then if you all would like to introduce any of your family that are here?
So I've got my sons, Sawyer, Grayson, my wife Heather, my in-laws, Melissa and Mike, some of my nephews, I'll stand up, Jax. Jackson, Carter and Bennett, my brother and his wife, Joe and Megan. Let me look. I feel like I'm forgetting somebody. Am I forgetting anybody? Nope. That covers it.
I have my wife, Megan, daughter Emery, I have my sister Amber, and nieces and nephews, my mom, Karen, and in-laws Pam and Gary. And I think that's it.
Well, thank you all for sharing them with us, from your family to ours, and we will do our best to take good care of them while they're on duty here at the city. So I'd like to get some photos, so if you guys could step up here. This is an ordinance adopting and approving a change of concept development plan in a commercial two plan development zone for an approximate 1.0 acre site located at 8748 US 42 and being located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US 42 with Farmview Drive, Florence, Kentucky to allow modifications to conditions imposed with the previous concept development plan, this Bank of America project. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a change of concept development plan in a commercial two plan development zone for an approximate 1.0 acre site located at 8748 US 42 and located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US 42 and Farmview Drive, Florence, Kentucky to allow modifications to conditions imposed with the previous concept development. The full text of ordinance O-212025, including its examination, is available for examination in the office of the city clerk of the city of Florence, Kentucky, in the Florence Government Center, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Ms. Whalen, second by Mr. Nguyen. Is there any discussion? I do know that Ms. Wingo, Mr. Nguyen did hear this item before the planning and zoning committee and did make a recommendation for approval. But either of you have anything to add?
I'll just review quickly. We've talked about this before, had a presentation here in council. This is the, at the location where the new Publix is going, there are several outlets there. There was a request by the Bank of America to change, some signage changes, that kind of thing. We added some conditions to the project to make it what we thought was better. They wanted to change the roof line a little bit from what had previously been presented. We allowed part of that, but we also required some other changes to that. I'm pretty sure that's most of what we did, Todd, is that right? That's pretty much everything. So, yeah, it's just trying to make it a little bit better project.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next, we have for your consideration an ordinance O-222025. It's an ordinance adopting and approving a change of concept development plan in a commercial two plan development zone for an approximate 3.8 acre site located at 8540 US 42 and including the property having a parcel identification number of 062.00-00-039.00 and being located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US 42 with Hopeful Church, Florence, Kentucky to allow demolition of an existing gas station, convenience store, and restaurant, and construction of a 6,372 square foot convenience store with gasoline pumps. So it's a Wawa project. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a change of concept development plan in a commercial two plan development C2PD zone for an approximate 3.8 acre site located at 8540 US 42 and including the property having a parcel identification number of 062.00-00-039.00 and being located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US 42 with Hopeful Church, Florence, Kentucky to allow the demolition of the existing gas station, convenience store, and restaurant, and construction of a 6,372 square foot convenience store with gasoline pumps. The full text of ordinance O-222025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the city clerk of the city of Florence, Kentucky, and in the Florence Government Center, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of...
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider. Is there any discussion? Ms. Wingo, we did talk about this at Planning and Zoning Committee, and we did have actually multiple meetings. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, however, the Planning and Zoning Committee for the city felt that there was additional work that needed to be done for consideration of this project. If you'd like to share a little bit about that for our viewing audience.
Sure. This is a project that was presented to us twice at the Planning and Zoning Committee level. There were a number of changes that we requested of the developer, which they agreed to. We had nine additional conditions with many subconditions in each of those conditions, so several pages long of the conditions that we added. This is a, it's a gas station, replacing a gas station, but it is expanding onto an additional vacant lot behind there to accommodate the size of the building, the pull-through traffic, that sort of thing. The, a lot of the changes that we made to that, there were some of the facade of the building that we requested that they make some improvements to. There were some lighting conditions, there were some entrance and exit conditions. This project, the entrances and the exits to this project were approved by the State of Kentucky Department of Transportation because it's on two state routes. We can't control access in and out of that location, but we did ask for specific signage, and the developer has been more than willing to work with us on these things. We've changed some of the lighting in the parking lot we requested changes for, we requested some changes for fencing along the wall that's on the one side of the project, that's on the east side of the project, fencing that will help block any light that would come from cars that were pulling in or out of the pumps, that sort of thing, going back into the neighborhoods so that they would not bother the neighbors. Todd, how am I doing? So it was, it was, it was pretty lengthy discussions that we've had on this. I think that's about it. If anybody has questions?
Is there any discussion?
May I?
Ms. Whalen?
I appreciate very greatly the work that our Planning and Zoning Committee of Pat and Gary have done on this project. Extensive review, a lot of time involved, and all of the conditions that they have requested and that have been accepted by the developer. If it was as easy as us sitting up here and saying we like or don't like a project, that would be one thing. But as city council people, we are not permitted to allow our personal opinions or feelings to come into play when we're dealing with a project. We have to weigh each one on its merits. It is a gas station replacing a gas station. It is a regional draw, which, in my opinion, you know, maybe doesn't belong in a residential area where they've chosen to put it, but because the rules and the laws governing planning and zoning are very specific, we are obligated to follow those laws and those rules and judge each project on its merit and not whether or not we like it or not. So, again, I appreciate the work that's gone into it, the changes that have been proposed to the project. I believe Wawa will be a good corporate neighbor and do everything in their power to make this as easy on our residents and our traffic flow as possible. So, personal feelings aside, this is the state law that we're required to follow, the process we're required to follow, and the discussions that we've had and the vote that we need to take based on the evidence presented to us. So those who have said we've never met a project we didn't like may not necessarily agree, and maybe we don't agree that it's 100% a project we like, but we recognize the value of it and the work that's gone into making it the best it can be for us.
I want to just emphasize what Ms. Whalen's saying is, so this project was approved by the Planning Commission, and so when they bring forward a recommendation for approval, it would take four votes to overturn their recommendation for approval, basically four votes to deny it. If it is a tie vote, I do not vote, I never vote as mayor in Planning and Zoning Matters, never do. And so a tie vote would also let the Planning Commission's recommendations stand. The Planning Commission did not have the near extensive conditions that the city's Planning and Zoning Committee did recommend, and the developer has agreed to, so we would be losing out on all of that hard work that our committee has put forth. So just want to make sure everybody understands how that works when we go to vote. Counselors, or anything that I misspoke on?
Okay. Under Kentucky law, if four members do not vote to override the recommendation of the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission's conditions will prevail if it's a tie vote. If it's four votes in favor of the project, then the conditions of the Planning Commission plus the additional conditions that the zoning committee recommended, which I understand have been accepted by the applicant and owners, those will then fall into place, so. And the deadline for taking final action is November 4th.
Correct.
The 4th, yes.
We would have to have a first and a second reading.
Absolutely. Yes, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Cable?
I was here for the planning and zoning. I think you guys did an amazing job with the conditions that you've placed to make it safer. I think that it would be, with those conditions met, a safer intersection there. My question is, one of those conditions is that Wawa work with the Kentucky Transportation District to put partitions in. That's not approved, it's just recommended, correct?
Mr. Hunt, would you like to address that?
It's a recommendation.
Just a recommendation. We cannot mandate conditions on infrastructure that we don't own, but with that, we did talk to KYTC, and they sounded favorable to doing those ballers down through there to add a little bit additional stocking, extend that turn lane down some, and some restriping. So they were on board, this has to get submitted.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
No.
Mayor, motion passes 4-2. Next, we have for your consideration a resolution authorizing the city of Florence to enter into a statewide emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Ms. Chambers? Second by Ms. Whalen. Is there any discussion? This was discussed, we did have Kevin Vocapool from Boone County EMA come last week. Chief is available for questions, if anyone has any. Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. For the mayor's report. Florence residents may pay their annual city property taxes at the Finance Department. The Boone County Sheriff's Office is conveniently located in the same department to collect the county property taxes, so you can do them both at our government center here. Fall cleanup is underway now through Sunday, October 19th, for city of Florence residents. Drop-off is available at the Public Services Maintenance Facility, that's 7850 Tanner's Lane. Proof of residency is required, and for more information, you can contact the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. The annual leaf collection program will run from October 20th through December 18th. For details on the collection schedule, visit the city website or call the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. Join us for a spooktacular evening at Ya Halloween Fest on Tuesday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Thomas More Stadium. Enjoy vendors, treats for kids, and fantastic fun for the whole family. For details, contact the Administration Department at 859-647-8177. Trick or treating in the city will take place on Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00. If you want to participate, be sure to turn your porch light on to welcome the little trick-or-treaters. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection event at Thomas More Stadium, home of the Florence Yalls, is scheduled for Saturday, November 1st, from 9:00 until 2:00. Registration form must be filled out, and you may obtain that form on our website or the county's website. You must be a Boone, Kenton, or Campbell resident to participate, and they do not allow businesses to participate. Please contact the Boone County Coordinator, Ken Points, at 859-334-3151 if you have any In partnership with Florence Christian Church, the city will host the Witness Tree event once again this year, and that is the first 11 days of November, November 1st through the 11th. With the daily ceremonies beginning at 8:00 a.m., the 11-day program raises awareness for the estimated 22 veterans lost to suicide each day. Will feature readings, reflection, and placing of 22 dog tags on the tree daily. Support resources will be available for participants. Join us as we honor our annual, our veterans at our annual Veterans Day program on Saturday, November 8th at 2:00 p.m. at the Florence Government Center in our community rooms in the lower level of the Government Center. It's never too early to spread some holiday cheer. The Holiday Card Contest is back. Create your most creative and festive cards for our local seniors. Entries are due to the Administration Department by November 12th, and winners for K through 8 will be announced at the Christmas Tree Lighting on December 2nd. Details are available at our city website or by calling 859-647-8177. Is there anyone on council who desires recognition? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? Please come to the podium.
Good afternoon, guys.
If you'd state your name, please. Yeah.
How's everybody doing?
Good. If you'd please state your name.
My name is Ericton Connor Davis. I am the owner of Lita's Tacos, second generation, born native of Boone County, Kentucky, where I also attended the same high school my dad went to school, which was Boone County High School. What me and my wife has created over the 16 years, the last 16 years, has been tremendously. I guess you guys can see it on my face, how hard I worked, day in, day out. What we have came to heads with and what we're currently dealing with is out of my control, and I totally understand, but I am a father of three. My wife, she works right alongside me, day in, day out. We probably work 12 to 16 hours a day, or maybe off one day a week. Now, Mayor, this is the first time I've met you, and I was kind of hoping to meet you prior to this, or maybe you might have stopped by and patronized my restaurant.
I've been there.
Fortunately, I wasn't there to meet you. I pretty much know all of our customers, their families, and their kids, and I'm a pillar of my community, guys. We've been at the restaurant for six years now, but we've been at our local Boone County Fair for 16. I also was raised in business, we had a business on Main Street, it was called AAA Skateboard Shops. When I was in the seventh grade, I thought that was something my dad put together for me and my brother. We would catch the bus from Ackerman and work it until 8:00 o'clock at night. The things I've done for this community, whether it's been back-to-school clothing, backpack drives, and I stand in my restaurant and talk to every youth and try to lead them in the right direction and try to off-lift and be a safe haven for the kids in the neighborhood, something I'm very proud of and stand by. I know we're a small pea in this pod that we're dealing with as far as the Wawa gas station. I guess, as you guys can see, those guys just got up and left. I'm not going to get up and leave, and I'm never going to leave. You know, sometimes they say change is good, guys, but in these situations where we're just now figuring out what we got going on, and we've grinded to the max, and I left my career where I worked for Lynn Regler Blacktop for 15 years, and my wife was a nurse, she left her career where my blacktop shovel paid for her college education. I'm really proud of the hard work and the way I was raised and who I am and what I mean, stand for for my family, but what you're looking at is a real person and a native of what we're standing in, and I can testify what I do and how I touch the community, and it's something that makes me very proud. To have the person that's with me today is really amazing because that's a whole nother story. We're going to stand tall up here, and I appreciate everybody's great votes and your planning and decisions of what's going to be better, but I don't know if you maybe thought for one day or one second where my kids are going to eat at, or how we're going to keep moving forward in life. Well, you could go to Union where it's $55, it's $88 a square foot, or you could stay right where you've figured it out, that's $19 a square foot, you know? But it's okay. I stand upon faith in God, and that's just how I was raised at the end of the day. I don't know where we're headed, I know we're headed in a good place. It would make me feel a lot better if there was somebody who would, who would have came to me and asked me, hey, we see you working hard for the community, we see you guys built something from a dream and turning it into a reality, what's your plans? There's only been a few people that's came over and, you know, to really figure out what's going on with us and where we're going, you know? 90% of the people that I run into in the community asks me, hey, what's going on up there? Come over and see me, I'm a- Come over and see me. I'm going to stand up as long as I can, and to see where that goes, only God knows. I guess you guys actually have the power to see where that goes. I don't want to hold anybody, and as I said, we're just a small pea to this pond of what's going on and the change of the world, and everybody's just kind of moving in their own direction and not really taking a look at the outsider, the bigger picture. With that being said, I don't know, guys, I'm just going to keep on working hard, and I got to hold my family together when my wife breaks down thinking about how hard we built something up and how it can just go just like that. And I tell my wife, the minute we start focusing outside of Lita's Tacos instead of our patrons within Lita's Tacos is when we lose. So I guess we're at that point. I thank you guys for your time, your service, and I truly appreciate a lot of you guys because I've seen you guys and you guys have patronized my restaurant, and I couldn't say enough, so. Thank you, guys, and God bless you, guys.
Thank you for sharing that. Is there anyone else in the audience that desires recognition?
Damn, that was impressive, wasn't it? He says he's my grandson, but he adopted me, I didn't adopt him, trust me. Our DNA don't match up, so that's part of the problem. So, the thing is, he just called me tonight, he said, I'm going to be there. I said, okay, I'll go with you. I have other things, I made Josh a TV star this week. He'll be signing autographs when this is over, so it'll be good. And we did a great thing at the library, and the snow was so deep in there, when there was snowing the people, it was unbelievable. I thought I was going to get some salt out and get out of the door because there was a lot of bull that went on in there. And I hope you guys can see something worked out there. Now, with Aaron here, I had cataract surgery, so I can see at a distance, and I have insider information that there's 800 more living dwellings programmed for out there that people don't even know about yet, so it's, it's going to be a lot of traffic. And the way it's set up now, it kind of reminds me of Chinese algorithms, to get in and get out of there. And the new plan with the, I call them beaver tails that stick up in the thing, that tells you that whoever did the planning years back didn't know what the hell they were doing, is what that boils down to, and they were going to add more to it. And, and it's, it's just going to be more and more and more traffic, and the good news is it will block them from going to Louisville, they have to stay in Florence, so they got to stay around and spend money. And there's an old saying in the used car business, that intersection, no matter how you polish a turd, it's still a turd, so I don't know how you're going to make it work. Good luck. And the police just need to station the car out there at all times to do the wrecks. I guess that's it. I wish somebody asked me, I want you all to kind of understand that I'm paying your salaries, you know? Maybe just that much, but he's helping pay them too, so you kind of got to take care of your people that you have there right now, not the ones that might come and might not come.
Amen.
Yep, yep. All right, well, thanks. That was inspirational.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Yeah. He's going to go back and wash dishes.
Yeah. I got to go mop the floors for the thousandth time.
All right, all right.
See you, guys, God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else desire recognition?
How's it going, everybody?
You'd state your name, please.
Okay, Alex Evans, been up here a few times. I don't have the heartfelt message, I already gave that once, I think. I'm just wondering when we can expect some, some lights at skate park?
We've ordered the parts, so we're just waiting on them to come in. It's the one light that's down, the flickering, so, and then if you're talking about the project itself, we're currently working on, as part of this phase, implementing additional lighting that was approved through the budget retreat that will expand and even improve the conditions as they are today.
So it's like in the, in the budget, there's money set aside for it?
There's money in the budget set aside.
Okay.
But it's a two-year phase?
Okay.
So please be patient.
We've definitely been patient, so.
Please continue to be patient.
We're being patient.
We'll get it worked through as, through the phase as quickly as possible.
Is there any other improvements being made?
So as part of this phase, which I'll just speak on, there were other ideas for additional phases that council hasn't currently approved, but there were other things through the master plan that came out of this that we'll discuss in future budget retreats, but as far as this phase, it's the lighting and the maintenance of the existing stuff. So some of the stuff that's failing, some of the cracking, we're going to get in there and do some of that maintenance and replacement.
How many lights?
We don't know yet. It's under design.
But you ordered it.
Well, I'm sorry?
Didn't you just say you ordered it?
We did. Are you talking about new lights or just the, we're getting several additional? The new lights, we don't know yet, so we're going to be expanding the existing because it's still, could need, you know, and you know that, you're there, it needs to improve its lighting altogether, but we got several coming in for the existing lights.
So like, when can we expect a layout, like a plan?
I'm not going to throw a date, Alex. Within, right now, it's within design, so I would say probably mid-next year. By then, we'll probably have design.
Like just the design?
Design, probably. If you're asking me to give you a date right now, I'm not the one, I have a project manager that's working on it, if you'd like to give me a call and we can talk to him, we can go from there.
That's cool. Are you guys doing anything else with the parks, like any of the other parks in the master plan?
Yes, we've got stuff going on at every park. I don't have that in front of me, but at Orleans Park, we're looking at some walking trails, improving there, a fishing pier. South Fork Park, we're going to be expanding the disc golf from nine holes to 18, and some parking improvements and walking trails there. At Lincoln Woods, we'll be improving the baseball fields with some fencing and some turf in the infield, as well as some parking, and a replacement of a basketball court. At Stringtown Park, we will have the addition of a brand-new basketball court, as well as some additional parking there. At Kennebou, we're looking at a splash pad and then some additional kind of shaded seating. Did I miss?
I think that you hit it.
Did I get them all? So those are high-level, from what I can remember, the bigger items within each park that's going to be addressed over the next two years.
That's the first phase.
Awesome. Has any, like, have there been any, has there been anything done, like, to the parks?
Not yet.
Or is everything still in?
We just got the funding July 1st, so we are a few months into design.
Sick. All right. Okay, well, yeah, I think that's it, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else desire recognition?
Hey, y'all. I'm Jackson Jenkins, I'm a friend of Alex's, actually, same concerns with the lights. How are y'all doing tonight? Alex pretty much covered everything I want to talk about. I'm just going to ask some consideration. I'm going to ask that, you know, we have some awesome parks in Boone County. I'm going to ask that we give the skate park the same attention, not with just lights, you know, because the lights is really the only thing that, I haven't heard of any expansion, improvement, anything with the skate park, what's other than turning lights on that have been there? I mean, I'm almost 30, and they've been there almost that long, and I haven't really seen them on, you know, not even trying to be rude up here, but I will ask, you know, this is a huge skate park. There are no skate parks that are good in the immediate area. There's a lot of traffic that goes through there, whether it's going by the skate park, in the skate park, around the skate park. We're doing splash pads, we're doing this, that, and the other, you just listed it off. Concrete's rough, it's 25 years rough, you know? I'm not saying repave the park, I'm not saying knock it out and build a new one, but some consideration that doesn't, it's not annual, some consideration that's a little more uppaced. Leslie here's done a great job, we reach out to her anytime we have any consideration, you know? A little bit goes a long way. Thanks.
So we did have multiple meetings, all the way back to January, there was thousands of people that did online surveys, exactly touching on all of those things, so we had multiple rounds of public engagement, multiple presentations to council meetings, so there's been a lot that has gone on, so you can get up to speak maybe with Eric after the meeting, it sounds like you're not up to speed on some of the things that we've presented, so we'd love to share that with you, and I think, hopefully you'll be happy with what you see and...
Don't get me wrong, Your Honor, I'm happy, like, I'm happy every day, I'm blessed to be here, then. But, you know, I've been part of some of the meetings, I've submitted the surveys myself, I've been a little bit more a part of things, you know, and that's just where I'm at, I'm up here once a week, I mean, this is, this skate park's been a huge part of my life and a big part of the community, so if anyone's going to see actions put in the dirt first, it's going to be me.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. You guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Roger Berger, and I'm here to speak about an ordinance that you passed June 17th of this year about solar panels. But my, I just recently moved to Florence, and that meeting was my first meeting here, but I would have some comments. I've been here since 1982. I've owned the green building across from Stringtown Restaurant, and the red building beside it where the police officer's lodge is, tore down the building in the back where the parking lot is, and I own the, own the small building next to the red one. And then I opened a travel agency in 1984 at the mall, down by Penny's, International Tours and Cruises. When the mall got rid of independent businesses, I had to leave, sold it, and they didn't do the right thing, and they went out of business. So I've had a long history in Florence, but the solar panel ordinance has bothered me a lot. And it's almost, in quotes, like you want to make it really difficult for people to have solar panels on their homes or in their businesses. You know, as I went through the eight or nine pages, whatever it was, of those rules, that not all folks are as smart as you, and they may have to hire an attorney in order to have environmental services put on their properties. I, myself, lived in Covington for 14 years, and I bought and restored three historic homes that were built back in the 1880s, one of which I lived in for 19 years. And I put solar panels on the top of it. At that time, it only cost about $11,000, now it costs about $15,000. And for three years, I think my average electric, because I had just had electric, my average annual electric bill was $284, which I thought was, I was pretty lucky for my $11,000 that I put into it, and of course, I sold it for a lot more than what I paid for it because electric panels are the end thing for many people. The section one of the ordinance says something to the effect that can't be visible from an adjoining property. If people have dormers on their second floor, they can see the solar panels. When you buy a historic property, you spend big bucks restoring it, not rehabbing it, restoring it. And so I think this was a huge mistake, to not allow solar panels on historic properties. The young lady to your right spoke against the ordinance, and the young lady to your left voted no. But before I ask you a couple of questions, I want to give you three studies. The Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory in 2019 did a six Midwestern state study, including Kentucky. They studied 23,000 homes, 19,000 didn't have any solar panels, 4,000 had some solar panels, regardless of the wattage. The value of those homes increased when they were sold by an average of $14,000-plus or 3.8%. In Kentucky, for the years 23 and 24, solar homes sold faster than other traditionally marketed homes, and for 19% more. This is surprising. In 2019, Kentucky was the, let's see, was the second state in the United States that had the most solar panel homes. I find it hard to believe, but that's what the study said. If Kentucky homeowners stayed in their homes for eight years, they'd expect to pay, obviously, for their solar panel system two to three times, and savings in energy costs over that period of time, plus selling their homes for 19% more than non-solar homes. A second study done by Zillow for ZIP Code 41042, in the years 23 and 24, found that solar homes sold for 9.8% more, so a 250,000 home would be 27,000-plus, a 350,000 home, 38,000-plus, and a 450,000 home for 48,000-plus. According to SolarLearning.org, 34 states have some form of tax incentive for solar. Over 2,800 cities and counties offer such incentives. The national average savings for solar homes is $2,200 a year. I guess, you know, I'm opposed to your ordinance, and I thank the two young ladies for voting against it, but the rest of you, I guess I would like to know why you voted for this ordinance against your constituents, and will you vote to reverse the action that you The floor is yours.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have any discussion? All right.
Thank you, Roger, for coming, explaining all this, it's very information I didn't know before.
Well, I'm very disappointed that those of you who voted for the ordinance and against your constituents didn't want to speak up to give justification on why you did that. It's very disappointing, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that desires recognition?
Can I say something real fast?
Certainly.
I just want to say thank you to everyone that came out to speak tonight. Alex is an important member of our community, owns a local business near us. Aaron, even though he was very emotional, had a lot of important things to say, and I just really appreciate them and everything they bring to our community.
I entertain a motion to adjourn. So move Ms. Whalen. So, Ms. Whalen, second by Mr. Nguyen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening.